Okay, all right. So it's now a little after 6 o'clock. We're back in session. This is Monday, March 26th. This meeting is being recorded for cablecast and YouTube presentation by Area 58 Community Access Media. The video of this meeting is not to be considered an official public record. First item on the agenda, we've got Dan Pallotta from P3 here because we need to sign some contracts for the police building. How about over there?
Where do you want me to go?
Oh, do you have a mic over there?
There's no speak there. Might as well come over here, Dan.
Yeah, come up here, Dan.
I don't.
I know.
How are ya?
Good.
Um, we received the notice of award signed when we got the notice of award signed. It brought it to the town administrator and at the same time, we got the contract signed. The contracts are signed too. We received insurance. We've gone through the insurance. We're having a little internal debate over one item in the insurance and I do think that council recommended to the administrator through the board or through the board through the administrator to just to make sure that Maya, if you're a Maya town, reviews the insurance also. We don't want to coordinate with Maya. We do it in every town. And it's specifically builder's risk. So some towns builder's risk is covered by the contractor. Some towns won't builder's risk covered by the town. We're not attached to another building, so it's not that critical at this point in time, but it's something that will get clarified in the next week or two. Contract is an AIA, standard AIA contract that has a supplemental condition rider. The rider came from council and we inserted it into one of the contract addendas. The supplemental conditions are referred to in the contract, but the actual supplemental conditions are in the project manual. So they have the supplemental conditions and the supplemental conditions are things to protect the town. Since the AIA document is put together by the American Institute of Architects, it naturally wants to protect the architect. So council takes out a lot of the language that naturally protects the architect and makes it protect the town. There's only one place to sign in an AIA document, so I'm requesting that the board vote to authorize the chair to sign on behalf of the town and we'll follow similar process when we get to change orders. There will be change orders. There'll be multiple change orders and when the change orders come forward, we'll get an authorization to move forward with the change orders, compile them, five or six or seven together and come and take the legal document to the building committee to recommend to the board, sign the change order. So that's the process that we've set up if that's okay with the board. There are three things that are required for that contract. One is the insurance. The other is the payment and performance bonds, also known as a PMP bond. Payment bond requires that should someone not get paid, they have the right to claim against the bonding company and not against the town. So there'll be instances where if the contractor goes belly up or if the contractor's not paying in time, the vendors have some rights. The vendors that are filed, sub bidders, which were bid two weeks before the general contractors, have even more rights embedded in Mass General Law Chapter 149 and they can file for direct payment. We hope none of that happens, but it can happen. The payment and performance bonds we received in my office, they had a typo and I sent them back because of the typo. That document has to be exact, all right? So I'm asking the board if they could authorize the chair to sign the contract and when we receive the payment and performance bond, I expect to get them once this afternoon and the chair can come in and sign it. You don't physically have to sign it tonight. It can be signed on Thursday. Work is already moving forward based on the notice of award you've already signed. So until I have the exact payment and performance bond, I would want you to hold off on actually signing, but authorize you to do so so that once you get it, I can zip down here and get the signature. Are there any questions?
You said there were three things, insurance, payment, and performance bond. What was that?
Insurance, payment, performance bond, and the contract.
Okay.
This is too easy. Come on! We've gotta have a couple of questions.
Can I make a motion?
All right. I make a motion that we authorize the chair to sign the contract pending a correction of the performance bond. Right. And payment bond.
I'll second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Oh, the performance bond, I didn't go into it, but the performance bond is just what it is. If they don't perform, we can call the bond and tell the bond to either supplement their forces or we can get them replaced and the bonding company will pay and not the community. Okay? Never had that happen, so this won't be the first.
Now, are you taking this with you?
No. I'm gonna come back and give the physical bonds, which the town will hold in a safe, to the town administrator and then I'll take my copies then.
All right, so I don't have to sign it right now?
Nope. Okay?
Perfect. Thank you, Dan, very much.
All right.
Thank you, Colleen.
Thanks, Colleen. All right, so why don't we move on to earth removal?
Can you see if you can find any? Yes. Just a minute.
Sure. All right, so we did the police building contract. Do you wanna talk about fire advisory while we're waiting for Amy or you wanna go on to the quarry policy?
Probably quarry.
Okay. All right, so quarry policy for new employees. We adopted a policy a while back that all employees needed to have a quarry check done and I think we just need a reminder that this is the town's policy and that all boards are employees, but we don't think we need to do anything else. We've already adopted it, right?
We've already adopted it, so it's in place and I think we should probably move forward and use this. It does get a little bit into who is authorized to conduct it, so we should take a look at that with respect to some of the larger departments and figure out whose department is going to be doing it.
Okay.
Is this the one that we redid maybe three years ago?
Yeah, we did this with Dale.
2015, maybe, if memory is correct from what I saw when I looked back.
So do you wanna review this and then we'll vote to if any modifications are necessary next week?
That might be a good idea, just I think for everybody to get, okay.
So why don't we hold this until next week and we'll vote to finalize the quarry policy? Okay. Is Amy?
Can you see it?
Perfect. All right, let's go. Why don't we go to earth removal?
So maybe I can set this up.
Yep, you got it.
Little history. Linda Letty and Amy Carlin came to this board several weeks ago offering to work on a new earth removal bylaw, actually, only earth removal bylaws since we have none. They poured themselves into this and amazing effort in a short period of time, created a document for a draft. We received that about a month ago. Soon thereafter, Brian Witt, who has quite a bit of experience in earth removal bylaws, offered to give us some suggestions and comments on that and gave us a red line marked up version. We have, for the last three or four weeks, been trying to meet together. We have run into days without electricity, postponed meetings and other deeply hot pressing issues and so somehow we've gotten to here, but here we are. So what we have at this point, we have Linda and Amy's draft. We have a red line commented annotated version from Brian and the other piece that we've been trying for the last three weeks, are to invite in any of the citizens that might have concerns or comments. So a fair part of what we're hoping for tonight is to hear about other concerns or comments. I think maybe there are four questions we wanna work on tonight. First of all, are there any new concerns and get a sense of what things we have to reconcile between the various versions that are out there. So that's thing number one. Thing number two is figuring out how to move forward. Thing number three is can we get to the place that we have a draft that we can get to town council? And the more we look at this, I think maybe we're gonna need kind of the wisdom and even expertise of town council to kinda unravel the pieces that we haven't quite gotten together. And then the fourth thing, really important one, is there time to get this done in time for town meeting? We've known all along, we're on fast track and we'd love to get the town, the protection of an earth removal bylaw at the same time, we're just trying to be careful that the concerns of all the citizens are taken care of and we're balancing the concerns of citizens and the rights of citizens with the protection of the community. So we're gonna open it up for discussion. I hope we're working on those four questions. What are the concerns? How can we reconcile them? How can we move forward? Can we get to the place of a draft for town council and is there time to get it done? So I think maybe, we certainly wanted to hear from Brian and hear what his suggestions about, but I think the first place might be to start with Amy if you have any comments as the discussion begins. So then we do that, we go to Brian and then we'd open it up for concerns or comments from anyone else.
Thank you, Mark, Dan, board. I just wanna echo what Linda and I talked about a couple of weeks ago when we first started. I guess this was from a couple of years ago. The open space committee got a recommendation that earth removal needed, was basically a hole in the bylaws. And so we've known for a little while that this needs to be done, so we're getting around to it now at the town meeting for May, hopefully. And one thing that we were concerned about is we wanted to make sure that our agricultural community can do what they wanted to do. So as Linda had said last time, we took the towns of Sutton, Marshfield, Hubbardston, and a few other little towns, kinda cut and pasted what they had based on what, you know, what fit for Plumton. And so what we were attempting to do was to avoid anything that wouldn't be legal because it's already in somebody else's bylaw for earth removal. So we tried to sort of short circuit it, which sounds a lot easier than what it actually was. And so now we have gotten some comments and, you know, we're open to hearing some of the other concerns. One of the things from the comments I've gotten so far is, you know, we wanna make sure and make it enforceable. You know, we don't wanna have things in it like reasonable because it's not a measurable criteria and you can easily hear a lawyer saying, "Oh, but town of Plumton, you're not being reasonable." So, you know, we wanna definitely make it to where it's enforceable and that was one of our concerns. But we definitely wanna make it such that our agricultural community can do what they need to do that's within the realm of what's acceptable to the town of Plumton. So we're open for comments.
All right. Did you wanna go to Brian?
Yeah. Thank you. So I'm not sure that the best way, how you wanna present this. My intention when I saw the draft was, from my professional side, deal a lot with earth removals, as Mark mentioned, a lot of history, working with attorney general office in various towns. I've served on two committees, two bylaw review committees in neighboring towns. So I'm not an expert by any means, but serving from agricultural standpoint, I have pretty broad and deep knowledge of earth removal. So I started looking through it with that, but I also threw in some other comments or suggestions that I've seen from other towns that I've worked on that I thought may fit here, but they are outside of the ag sector like the purpose statement, for example. So think of whatever it's worth, just suggestions and not regard my passions for the agriculture or anything. Do you wanna, do you wanna go like section by section on how much depth you wanna go in on, to make this a workable session that can talk about some of the whys behind the comments of where I made, or get particular questions on different areas that I've suggested that don't make sense or you want some background on? How would the board like to see?
I think, I'd like to hear what Amy thinks. I think maybe the major points and the major issues that you saw the need for something a little different than Amy and Linda had put forth might be. So highlight the big things 'cause they're the things that we wanna entangle, that we want to think on the bottom.
Okay. Briefly, on the purpose, I took this from Plymouth, which recently just had their bylaw passed. I see what Amy's saying about the reasonableness and that sort of thing, so that's fine. The purpose for putting that in there is I thought that the original draft purpose was a little bit too one-sided. You do have to try to balance the purpose. So in Plymouth, they talk about the need for agriculture and some other aspects to that, so I think it's important to at least incorporate some of that language in there so you're trying to get that balance of a purpose. The rest of it, I think, is, could be fine.
And I think we could do that.
Yeah, that's what I'd be doing.
And I think the next big point, if I may, just that I thought was big, and if anybody else, I know a couple of people have seen your draft, in Section 4.2, we had required that everybody submit a permit because we didn't want the person applying for the permit to decide themselves if they were exempt. So from many other towns, specifically Marshfield and Sutton, they had to go to the board to determine if they were exempt 'cause we didn't want people saying, "Oh, I'm exempt," because then everybody's gonna do that. And that was one of our concerns, not from agriculture, but from those who are using agriculture as a loophole. And I know Linda particularly, the conservation commission looked at this, but particularly Linda researched where people were using loopholes and calling it agriculture and sliding in. We aren't concerned per se about agriculture. We're concerned about people using the loopholes and calling themselves exempt 'cause they're doing it in their own right. So by, in Section 4.2, it was removed that everybody should have to have the board look at it. So that was, that was the first big thing I saw. Would you say, would anybody else say that there was another big thing before that in Section 4.2?
You wanna talk about that one before we move on?
Yeah.
So the thinking there is that if something is exempt, it's exempt. And from an agricultural standpoint, there's a lot of normal ag practices that go on, particularly with cranberries. You could be renovating your blog where you're stripping it off and bringing it in fresh sand. You might be sanding your blog during the winter time when the ice is frozen. You have to go out there and spread a layer of sand on top of the ice and that window might be a matter of days, could be a matter of hours that you have. And so I don't want, I would argue this one, so the cows come home, or the cranberries come home, that you would not have to go to the board and get permission for doing normal ag practices. And it is very true that some people have the tail wagging the dog and they're hiding behind the ag exemption and they're making it look bad for true ag producers because of that. So that is something that you have to be conscious of. And so the suggestions that I've made are that if someone is selling the material, that is usually a bigger trigger for a bigger project. And that's been used in, was used in Plymouth, was used in Carver. And the attorney general, if you went through with that process, the attorney general will caution you on that because they don't care that someone is selling the material. If it's an agricultural project, in their mind, it's an agricultural project. So they will caution the town about that, but they will let it go through 'cause they've been consistent with that. And using that as a trigger, well, this is a discussion point here, is that if it's enough where they're gonna be selling the material, then it's a good sized project and it actually has a commercial aspect to it, they probably shouldn't have a level of oversight. If someone is just moving sand from one of their blogs to another, they should be allowed to do that as a normal course of business and not have to go to the board and get permission to do that. So by selling the material, that's what we have found in my experience, is a pretty good threshold of, it's probably a good sized project that's gonna, that's gonna require some oversight. You know, sometimes I've done it on a strict yardage basis, whether it's 50,000 yards or 100,000 yards, whatever it may be. That's workable too 'cause you can kinda gauge the size of the project on that one, but I found the monetary one is also a big trigger. So there's different ways you can approach it, but what I don't wanna see is just normal, regular, everyday ag projects get held up unnecessarily 'cause that's in Section 3 of the general laws where it's not allowed anyway, so that one is gonna get tossed for sure by the attorney general. So what I would like to see is to find a way, this is why earth removal is very difficult to get through because of those people who are trying to sneak something through. That is the challenge that every town faces. So hopefully what I've presented is a way to get through that. And some of the other ones that I mentioned in there, again, were taken from Plymouth where you're exempting things like septic systems and some of those basic things that you don't wanna hold up a project to get permission from this board 'cause you could have a snowstorm, whatever, you know, there's reasons why the board might not meet regularly and you might have emergency situation where you need to get something through. So some of those basic things I tried to identify in there, again, borrowed from other towns that I thought seemed reasonable, but again, ag is my thing, not septic systems and.
And that was part of what we exempted too, septic systems, so.
Yeah, so that, so I would think from a town's perspective, it's good to just kinda use the normal things. And then if it's going through site plan, putting on my old planning board hat, if you're doing a project that's involving, site plan anywhere under the auspices of the planning board, I don't see any reason why the person would need to come see this board and the planning board. I think the planning board should be able to handle anything that's under the site plan, so subdivisions and that sort of thing. That's the purpose of having the planning board, in my mind. So that was the thinking for the 4.2 area, where I was coming from with that.
So I'm, so now I'm a little confused. Which, this is, it strikes, it strikes how no earth removal should be permitted. Are you saying we should put it back in or?
I'm saying, no, I'm saying strike it out.
Strike it out. So the, they don't have to get, not everybody has.
Okay, so you're all right with that?
No.
You're not all right with that?
I'm not saying I'm not all right. I'm not saying I am all right. It's just good to hear his logic. I know Linda and I put in a call to him and we haven't been able to, to really get together to discuss these things, so I think some comments like, okay, so, and Brian, this might be something that we just need to really dive really, really deep into with, you know, whoever else is interested. But like, why couldn't you get, if the permit is good for a year, why can't you apply to sand? I mean, there, let's say there are five things that you always do on a cranberry blog. Why couldn't you say, okay, these five things, I'd like to get from, from January 1st, 2018 to January 1st, 2019? And then you've got a permit for that entire year. I mean, there are things you know you're gonna do, so that wouldn't work?
No, I mean, I get what you're saying, but from an agricultural standpoint, these guys are already up against it in terms of time and involvement and I don't wanna have to tell them, you don't have to go get a permit to do your normal ag practices that have been already exempted under Massachusetts General Law. They, and it's just one more burden, they have to go through the whole permit process. I would, I would fight that one to the end and I would lose.
But if.
The general that we have.
But yeah, and maybe I'm just missing something, but if they were determined exempt, okay, Brian, your cranberries, these five things, you are exempt and you've got a letter from the board saying that, you're done. You've exempt, you've been exempted, right?
So, but it's already, it's basically automatic, so you're just, you're having them go through a step that's not necessary.
It's already allowed by law.
It's already allowed.
It's allowed in Sutton and Marshfield.
So why are we having them do that?
Sutton and Marshfield.
Certain things are allowed by law. I agree with what you're saying, Brian, is I don't want these people that have already been doing these five things to now have to come in and request a permit from the board to do the five things that they do every year that they've always been allowed to do.
It's like the Weapons Protection Act. There's certain practices that agricultural people are allowed to do under the Weapons Protection Act and they're exempt. They don't have to come in and get permission from the conservation commission to do them. If they exceed what they're allowed to do, the conservation commission would come in and enforce and do whatever is necessary. Same with earth removal. You have to have a balance there of what's going on in the town. So if some operation is, you can, it has to pass what I call the base, the straight face test. So if you have all these trucks coming in and out and they're going, various trucks or what have you, someone from the town should probably go in and check that out and make sure it's, it's going well. If it's a fairly, it's a good sized operation, maybe that grower should give the town's heads up, "Hey, I'm gonna be renovating this blog, I'm gonna have like 50 trucks going out of here." That's just up to them to let you know, but you might have the right to kinda check in and see what's going on.
Right.
Just the conservation commission would do the same thing. So it's the same principle, in my mind. It's just a different stop weapons, but it's the same, same idea.
And I don't disagree with what he's saying. My question is, okay, then can't other people who might not be, and I'm gonna call it pure just for simplicity and discussion points, somebody that's not that pure can then determine they are exempt as well? That's our concern. So I wanna balance what ag needs to make sure we don't have any loopholes. So that's the tough part. I don't, I don't really know how to do that. And you set a trigger with selling material and that could be an option.
But that's not currently in there.
It's a microfossion.
Okay. Where was it in yours, Brian? I missed that.
Can I give my definition of ag, sorry?
No, that's fine. But if it's, if it's not clearly in there, then maybe we should get it clearly in there.
It's in.
So that would be the kinda thing, if it's not in, if it's in there, Brian, if you could point that to me later, that way we're not wasting time, or a sentence that would, that would, that we could consider that would need that.
It's in 5.2.1.2, Activities Eligible for Exemption.
Page what?
Page five.
Page five.
And it's under Section 5.2.1.2. The section is called Activities Eligible for Exemption and it is letter G. Removal Necessary for Cranberry Inhabitants or Other Ag Newses, etc. Do we have conversion controls here? Are you not seeing that?
Oh, no. It's there.
Okay.
Yep. Oh, she's reading it.
But that doesn't say about selling earth, does it?
Right.
No, no, you could've.
Oh, I got a little copy, I guess. Sorry, Brian.
Yeah.
Do you want mine?
G.
G. We do have a revision issue here.
And does not include the removal of earth for sale. So the earth for sale is the trigger, right there?
And the attorney general will caution you on that, but they'll let it go through because, like I said, in their mind, if it's an ag project, it's an ag project, they don't care if someone's selling it or not. It's just, it's a nice benchmark because if you are selling the material, then it's probably a big project. And also, it's not something that you're just moving the sand between your own property, you're actually selling it to somebody else. So I think it's a nice trigger point, so to speak, to try to identify what someone is doing for their own use on their own blog versus selling that material and kinda going into a commercial.
Jen's got a question for you, sorry. Go ahead, Jen, what's your question?
I was wondering how you would identify if someone's actually selling it. 'Cause I know, seeing certain instances in town where truck came, soil was taken off and how do you know that it was actually sold?
I think some towns have followed the trucks to see where they go. As if it's.
We've got that control.
It's not, I mean, nothing is, nothing is perfect and there's no, I mean, look at anything. You're clearing trees, you're within 100 feet of a BBW. The only way you find that out is if someone calls or a conservation commissioner can see it, but you're in the backwoods. I mean, these things happen. There's no absolutes here. I can't say that this is gonna be a foolproof plan. It's not perfect. But having to get permission to do everything, every time you move a bucket of sand on their properties is not a solution either. And this has worked in Carver, it's worked in Plymouth, it's worked in, those towns have significant work and we have here in Plumton and it's working for them. I would think we'd be able to manage that, but it, you know, it's not, like I said, nothing's working.
Don't we have a right to farm bylaw?
We do.
I mean, we do. And with this agricultural exemption being that, this is a sand and gravel removal bylaw we're coming together. And I really liked the first outline that you guys did. I thought it was great. We're not Plymouth, we're Plumton. And, you know, basically, I've read a lot of this language. I just got this really late today, so I really haven't had a real chance to review, write down my questions. We're missing a lot of the ConCon members. ConCon members are an integral part of overseeing our critical habitat, are, they have, they have such an integral part of decision-making process. We have Amy here and she did a wonderful job. And it's not here.
The chair?
Yeah, the chair's not here.
The chair's here.
The chair.
Oh. Marty's not here and we don't have Linda, so, and we don't have Amy. So, I mean.
So what's your issue? Is it?
Oh, there's a lot of issues I have, absolutely. I mean, I'm an agriculture.
So spell them out so that we can at least address them.
Well, I mean, I thought we were going one by one.
Okay.
Okay. I'll just, just point out, the other two committees that I sat on, it was a year-long process to go through it, not suggesting that we need to do a year-long review, but we're trying to do something in a relatively short period of time and a lot of it is understanding understanding each other's, not that we have sides here, but I'm representing the ag interests here. And sometimes people who don't have an ag background or a depth on cranberries in particular, don't understand all the issues. So sometimes it takes a while to work through them, understand what each other's concerns are. I think it's, it's not that it can't be done, but we're asking a lot to try to get it done tonight, but it's a start.
Right. It's too important to have an arbitrary date to say we're gonna have to have it done by tonight, and we take the time to do it right.
Right.
The other thing is, we've had an issue with a cranberry grower who did other things. And I know when I went to the state, the state basically says, if you got agricultural exemptions, you're fine. I mean, when I talked to the state about gravel and compost and sand, they were basically saying, look, the farmer has the right to do these things unless they go outside of certain parameters. So I'm with you on the letting them have the right to do it. We can't have everybody getting a permit every time, and is this board gonna act as the, as the board that you have to go through? It doesn't make sense.
Well, because determined that, that was one of the questions that we brought up. We said, who should it be? We didn't dream that it was gonna be you guys, and then you guys said, it should be us, and we're like, great.
Because we do the permits now.
We do the permits, but putting where everybody has to come to us for every little permit, like if they're moving sand, that doesn't make sense.
Well, we saw that it made sense in Sutton and Marshfield, it may not make sense in Plumpton. So what we did was, we just pulled together...
No, I understand that.
...we thought was best, and then we go from there, whatever's best for Plumpton.
So two issues there, though. Who is going to be the license grant or permit granting agency, whether it's us or planning? And we discussed that when we were in a month ago. But I think there's that separate issue, is if every single person who messes around at all with the earth is gonna have to come in for a permit, we're gonna get, either body is gonna get overwhelmed.
Right, we're never gonna get our other work done.
And we are, so I think that's the balance, is we have to lean a little toward not getting into being overwhelmed by a permitting process.
Well, and we haven't had anything prior to this. So anything is gonna be an improvement over what we currently have. So, you know, we may even have to do this in phases. You know, maybe we don't get exactly what we want the first time, but we work through it and kind of learn from our mistakes and tighten up where we need to. But I mean, we definitely need to get something in play, because it's just, having nothing is not acceptable. So do we wanna go, do you have a comment about something we've already talked about?
Yeah, it's just a quick question, and it sounds like, and I don't know if there's an example of this out there, but the question is really just whether or not we can help discourage or prevent somebody skirting around the framework for agriculture, correct?
Mm-hmm.
So it's not so much for the existing agriculture that's here, that's already permitted, that's an approved grower, or somebody that's using it how it should be. Is there an example that anybody's been able to find of a town that's run into a similar situation, that, you know, just from my experience, I'm not aware of that, they were able to then do something that didn't impact their existing agriculture, but wasn't allowing somebody to come into abuse of the system?
Well, we've had instances in the past, this is quite a few years ago, where we had a cranberry grower who wanted to remove gravel to put in an acre of strawberries. And he wanted to remove an enormous amount of gravel in order to do this. And we denied it, because we didn't think that the gravel removal was necessary to grow an acre of strawberries. So there just wasn't the return on an acre of strawberries, you know, to do this much earth removal. So there have been instances, and I think in the past, we have denied them, because it just didn't make sense. And to do something under the guise of agriculture, when it's not really an agricultural use, it's, you want to haul out the gravel, then we need to have the right to be able to deny those.
Right, right. Yeah, and I'm just thinking, you know, of what, I guess the concern of everybody, if something slips through, then what is the recourse that someone has? But I'm sure there are plenty of examples.
Yes, I, okay, you asked me what I had a problem with. A lot of this talks about removing the soil terminology here. I have spent my entire life educating myself about building soils, not stripping soils, building soils. And I think it's very important, because soil is alive. There are really beneficial organisms in soil. You should not be getting rid of it. So a lot of the language in the altered bylaw is talking about soil and removing it from it. So I think that we should have a longer process reviewing this, I really do. It's the way that things are going now.
You would have no problem, though, with an agricultural person coming in and saying, I want to establish a new bog, right?
Oh, no, not at all.
Okay.
I am an agricultural person. I've had a certified organic farm in this town, you know, I've been certified since the 90s. I'm an older farmer in this town. I just, I, you know, they have to follow the rules, just like we do. I love cranberry growers. You know, there's certain aspects of stripping soils and...
But that's a part of building the bog.
What's that?
That's a part of building the bog, is that you're going to have to take the top seat.
I understand that. I understand that completely, okay? But there's, you know, it's against my principles of stripping soils, it's just, you know, that's just against my personal principles, but I understand why they have to do it. But there are also rules in agriculture that we all have to follow. Wetlands regulations and so forth.
Sure, but those...
But I have no problem with people putting in bogs. That's not the issue here. The issue is here is removing important soils, sands, and gravels, especially in critical habitats. And a lot of the language in here is talking about the ConCon, and how, you know, how these determinations should go to other boards, and I don't agree with that. I think they're very important.
Unless I'm missing something, though. By definition, if you build a bog, you're going to be moving sand, soil, potentially gravel. And all we're saying is, as long as it's not, as long as it's part of the agricultural operation, then why put up roadblocks? If somebody then wants to really do it under the mask of, what I really want to do is do a gravel operation or whatever, then we want to have some wording here that allows us to go back. But I, from my perspective, I don't want to put roadblocks up in front of the people who are just running an agricultural business, doing it well. They should be able to run their business.
That's right. This is two different subjects.
I don't think so.
Well, I think running a bog and then creating new, and taking out 600,000 tons or whatever it was, yards of film.
Okay, so now we're, right, and I agree with you.
It's different than building a bog.
Right, so now we're into the parameters of what constitutes what's a normal operation.
It depends on how big the grower is.
I just thought of an ag, could there be a form that's done, that the person could just fill out, like you said, I mean, I know cranberries, Brian and I have worked with the same people for a long time, that would exempt them from an application? Like, I get what sanding is. They have to go out at all hours, the irrigation, all of that. But that would exempt them from having to do an application, a checkoff sheet of, am I exempt? Do I need to, it's like a worker's comp form. Do I need to have something, insurance, or don't I? And if you qualify, then you don't need it, it doesn't apply to you, if you're a sole proprietor. Things like that. So I'm using my insurance background in it. Could there be something that we had, that somebody who is doing legitimate agriculture work, that would say, do I need a form? Am I just sanding? Like the five checkpoints or whatever that you had brought up? And then it wouldn't apply to them, to have to do a gravel removal or the...
No, you're still making them fill out the form.
But it could be a one shot, right.
Or something that they're allowed to do. And I don't know if there's any way to really separate agriculture from agricultural.
But do they have to do, what makes them agriculture?
There is the fundamental issue, and I think that's where we become, at some point, the judging agencies, you know, does it sound like agriculture, or does it sound like mining?
Do they have to file somewhere to become agriculture in this town? Where is it done? At what office? No way?
No, I mean, if you've got your land in 61A, that's an indicator.
Yeah, it has to be done through that.
But not everybody that has agriculture is in 61A.
Okay. I was trying to think, could there be something in that department that would be...
I fill out papers.
She's got her band up in the back. I'm sorry, I don't remember your first name.
Franny. All right, did you work with him? No. So I was looking at 5.2, no, 5.1.3, it's, I then DC, it's all Xed Out, and the comment was, seems to contradict, new excavations constituting of an expansion of existing operations into areas of land not presently being mined will require permits in accordance with the terms of this bylaw. There are two different issues. But I think what it is, it's a creation of this bylaw, and it's this prospect thing that's hanging over everybody's head. So just a hypothetical situation, if somebody were to go in and say they were going to restore a bog, and in doing so, they removed a lot of material, and were selling it, but doing it under the auspices of a cranberry operation, and the area where this is being done is very secluded, it would be hard for anybody to really know what was going on. And I guess new excavations, I think that's like a key, I think we've gotta look at key terms, and we have to maybe have that help guide our, the bylaw creation. New excavations, I think, is something that should be looked at. If something new is going to be made, then that needs to be examined, you know, for what it is, and how it's going to be created, and what the cascade is that follows as a result of that. Do you know what I mean?
But that's not even new, that's restoration. That's restoration, that's not new.
What's restoration?
What that has been labeled as is new, or not new, is restoration. But when someone comes in and says they want to restore, but they don't know how large they want the bogs to be, but they know exactly how much gravel they need to remove, that's kind of an indicator.
Sure, sure. So I guess we just want to make sure that, you know, that, it's just hard to have a check and balances on standing.
This is a very difficult topic.
And that's the problem. And then the other thing I wanted to address was, somebody questioned what a lateral, what a lateral support was, I think it was? Yeah, a lateral support. So I looked it up, and it's got to do with the supported land itself, and its natural condition, and the land that surrounds that land, and how it all kind of helps itself stand up. I guess they're talking about a vertical situation. And someone had mentioned that they weren't sure what a lateral, I forget what it is here.
It's in 6.2.
What's lateral support? Yeah, yeah. It's support which the supportive land itself requires, and which in its natural condition, and the natural condition of the surrounding land, it would require. So, I don't know.
You know, it might make sense to take this kind of step back and get ConCon together, maybe with one member of this board, rather than trying to do this as a board, and hash out these issues. And then kind of come together with more of a final consensus of a product, and then come to us.
Yeah.
Rick, what do you have?
I spent about two and a half hours with Brian a week ago, going over decisions, you know, back and forth. We're not that far off with what he's got in there, highlighted for ag, and some other good thoughts that are in there. It's not, we're not that far off. We changed a couple of things, some sizes and some yardage. Not a lot. It's very difficult to do this in a large group.
In a setting, exactly, it's not real productive.
So, yeah, I'd love to be able to, we need to get a placeholder in, we'll be able to do that.
We have a placeholder.
And then, excellent. And then we can sit down with a small group and...
Hash it out.
Hash it out, it'd be much easier. But we're very, you know, very close, just because of the timing of the storms and everybody going in different directions to get it right together.
I'm feeling like we're on the edge. I think we're close. I think it's real tight time-wise. I think if we could get to a place that Amy and Linda and maybe Brian together can just even refine this, or see the areas they agree on, maybe there's a little disagreement. I feel like maybe if we could get to the place of a few less red lines, and then send it to town council, and let them be the ones to help us figure out those last pieces. Or maybe for those to be the ones that say, this isn't solvable yet, we're not close enough, and then we can give it another year. I mean, ultimately, this easily could belong in the realm of the bylaw review committee. Though I am tempted, and I hear Rick, and I know it seems like we're far apart. We're not so far apart, and we've got four weeks left, I think we should just keep upping it this and see if we can get there. I would hope maybe we can just end up with a red line document in town council to untangle the last pieces.
Well, there's definitely more that we agree on, based on the fact that there's less red lines than there are black print. So that is a good thing. So, yeah, I think that, I agree, we're close. So you would rather just us totally step back? You don't want to continue to be involved in the hash out of this?
I'd like to be involved, but, you know, look, really, the experts are out there.
You're right.
It's not us.
It's not us.
And the best we can do is sort of nurse the process along, I think.
Kind of be facilitators and, you know, let them work it out, okay?
I was wondering if it might be helpful if we talked to council a little bit beforehand, and maybe had them point us in the direction of language that would do more to regulate a commercial sand and gravel operation, and kind of take the discussion a little bit more away from the agricultural piece. Because I see Brian's point, while everybody was talking here, I was just rereading Mass General on Chapter 40A, Section 3, which is specifically about the exemptions from zoning and everything. And it's very broad, and it's somewhat limiting as far as what we can actually regulate, which I think is what Brian was getting at, as far as some of the language is concerned. So I'm wondering if we kind of came at it more from the perspective of, this is what we don't want, like a large-scale, commercial sand and gravel operation that's being done under the guise of agricultural, and maybe council could help us fine tune it, like sooner rather than later, and just make sure that we're kind of on that right track. I feel like we're getting a little lost in the minutia, and there's, there's a lot to that exemption in 40A. I just pulled it up because they actually modified it at the end of 2016, and I think that there might be more modifications coming down. But it's incredibly broad. It basically says that anybody with any number of agricultural uses can essentially do what they want. Expansion, new construction, it's, the list goes on. I mean, I'm scrolling, and it's paragraph after paragraph. And I'm just wondering if maybe we just could have council simplify it a little bit for us, and just get us something that will be effective to prevent type of operation that we don't think would be good for our town.
So rather than reviewing this, you'd have them suggest something?
Maybe suggest something upfront, on a preliminary basis. I don't, I don't think it's worth having them review this quite yet. I agree with Mark, that I think we need to work out a few more bugs before sending them a document. But maybe say to them, you know, can you, do you have anything, like a template?
Have some existing...
For something, maybe start small, with something that we think would be beneficial to us as far as preventing somebody from coming in and excavating a huge amount of material and affecting the neighborhood and everything, but while trying to kind of stay away or tiptoe around the zoning issue. Because I do think that that, we don't want to put all this time into this, and then have it get kicked back because somebody feels like it's, you know, not in compliance with the 40A.
I hear you on that. I wonder if we couldn't impose upon Amy and Linda and Brian, maybe for a little more of their time, and then together, and then Amy and Linda to just get to a document that could go off to town council. I mean, if town council's gonna offer something different, I, we're gonna be Amy for next year. I mean, it's just not enough time for all of us to review this year. I'd love, even this version, though, if we could clean it up in the next week, and save one week for... if we could clean it up in the next week and say, one week from today, we have something that we could send to town council.
Rick's got a comment.
This is a general comment for the audience. Basically, if there's a piece of property that somebody owns and they want to take the sand and gravel out and they meet the parameters, they'll be able to do that even with what we're going to eventually get into place here. If it meets all the environmental pieces, however they may be. You know, this is not to stop, to stop at all. I mean, everybody likes to have a standard road when it's icy out, so it's got to come from somewhere. You know, the 48, Section 3, we know is very broad. It covers a lot of different things and Nick and Brian has really got that handled here. So I think that maybe a little bit more time, they come back and save, you know, some town council time.
I think what is important is to find somebody that you should talk to with a lot of environmental background and rules and regs in that area for protecting the water when this spill comes out, even if it's in, you know, daily practices. I liked Bree's idea. I mean, we all have to fill out agricultural burning permits. I mean, I fill out 50 pages for my organic certification. I don't see, if you make a very simple form and how many bog owners do we have in town, just, you know, I'm going to be standing, I'm going to be cleaning out my ditches, I'm going to be doing the, you know, to try to, you know, separate them from the sand and gravel removal people. I see, I thought that was a good idea.
So is there anyone else that hasn't commented that wants to be heard or wants their input as we keep going with the process?
I have one question. Give me the thousand cubic yards, how many trailers are we talking, these, you know, if we were looking at trucks with trailers, how many would they be?
It's all in expertise, but I think what, 27 yards is in a typical truck.
48.
28 yards. So we're talking 400? Is that roughly?
405.
Trucks?
For a thousand?
For, for a thousand yards?
Oh, okay, right.
35, 30.
35, okay, okay. I just wanted to get an idea of the size of what we're talking about. Okay, thank you. My own notification.
So we're going to send this back to Brian and Amy and Linda to hopefully work their magic on it. Brian, you want a little more time on it?
Absolutely.
And I think we recognize that maybe everything won't be resolved and we might have two clauses and I hope maybe town council can be the one that, we're not, we're not going to get everything in there. We're not going to run over everyone on every issue. Linda's going to take. You think in a week, we could end up with a document we could send off to town council?
Maybe next month?
I know we, I mean, I can only speak for myself. We finished the document February 26th. Here it is a month later. We're just getting comments and it's like, wow, that's asking a whole lot. We died over this. And I would have hoped that comments would have come in earlier. So I personally won't be able to spend any more time on it because I'm traveling. And I know Linda's coming back and some other members of ConCom will be, but I do think it's a lot when it takes us longer to, it takes, it takes longer to review it than it does for us to draft it. That was a little disappointing. So I'm going to just throw that out there. So I, my job has suffered, so I think I might be done.
Okay. So we want to talk to Linda and if she doesn't have any more time on it, then maybe we just take it with Brian's red lines?
Well, isn't there another Marty over at works with the ConCom? Can't she review it maybe?
Sure. Yeah.
That's why I'd want to speak for herself.
Yeah, we'll let her speak for herself, obviously. I'm just wondering, because we only have Linda left and Marty at the ConCom.
And John Mathias.
And John Mathias.
Okay.
So.
So I do want to pour that with Linda, you know, see if she can get it to the other conservation?
I think Linda's back tomorrow, I believe. I'll try to be in touch with her. We'll see how quality we could get. Maybe we're done.
Okay.
I hope not, because I think we're 95% there, but we've got that last 5% to go. So I'll keep trying to push it a little and try to...
Okay.
May I ask a question? What was wrong with the first draft?
With the first what?
Draft of the bylaw.
That I think that it was too prohibitive for agriculture. That was the problem.
But we have right to farm bylaws in this town.
Right, but you can't have a by, an earthy rule by law that is so restrictive that it doesn't allow people, the cranberry growers, to do the usual work on their bogs without getting a permit.
What, you're removing sand and gravel?
Possibly, possibly. Yeah. We don't want to restrict the people who are already, you know, doing this by law and they're allowed to do it and to come up with a bylaw that now requires them to get a permit from this board to do the activity they've been doing for 50 years by law, already allowed by law, Chapter 48. It's just going to get us, I don't think we want that type of, we don't need to go there.
There's still a lot of great protections in this. They have to go, have to go in front of ConCom, all the, you know, all the other boards and this board too. The strawberry example, you know, let me give you guys a bit template so that you, that things are defensible.
Didn't you know, was that part of it? You took out the, they took out review of the ConCom.
Yeah, right. That was part of this. It was taking out review by the ConCom.
If ConCom doesn't have any special powers when it comes to the sand and gravel, we cover what we cover. That's still going to be covered. Anything ConCom does, but if there's a piece of high ground, there's a piece of weapons around it.
But they have to review the surrounding, you know, watering, the wetlands, the habitat.
That's not taken out.
Okay.
If it's under ConCom's approval.
What I suggested was that we treat it like you do a site sand review. It doesn't go to ConCom, it goes to all the different boards. If they choose that, this is not my jurisdiction, they just sign off.
Or they just sign off.
Very simple. It's not just ConCom, that was the point. Took out just the ConCom part, but in my comments, I said, it should go through all these other boards.
Everybody, right. Right. Okay. All right.
We just want to fully acknowledge Amy and Linda, their initial work. Brian jumped in, Rick jumped in, actually acknowledge everyone in the room that's come to this and is thinking about it. We're all volunteers and we're working hard to do this down. Our volunteer efforts, we really, really, really appreciate.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Coming from the super volunteers.
Okay.
Thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
All right, so you'll work on that one? Okay.
Is this pulling the rabbit out of the hole?
No. All right, so how about fire, fire, sorry? Mark, are you going to be part of, will you be part of? No, I don't think so.
I just tried a lot of fire, I'll kick the process even before.
Okay. So based on last week's meeting, we're MRI presented, it turns out there's a lot of people interested in helping us with this, how we go forward with the fire department. I have, let's see, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11 people that have volunteered plus probably another three coming.
That's great.
So we have...
How many of them are residents?
1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, probably 10. Yeah.
I don't think that should be a requirement. You don't think that should be a requirement?
No, because that would exclude the fire chief, the interim fire chief. I don't think that makes sense. For the most part, and Cisco would really like to be involved and I think that makes sense. So other than those two, everybody else is basically a resident, which I think is great. The issue becomes, how do we put together probably two committees? Because 12 people becomes a debating society. So we're thinking of having one that is, has the technical expertise. These would be people who have served as firefighters, EMTs, paramedics. And basically, first thought is to go through the recommendations of the MRI and sort of rank them in terms of what's most important, maybe important and least important. And also, I want to get somebody on there that has financial skills that we can put some costs around these. They're just rough estimates, so we get an idea of what we're talking about. We've sort of, we had a chat with Jason Vaveros, the fire chief of Halifax today, and Phil Curran was there, the interim fire chief. And they're pretty close in terms of when they talk about what they think the staffing should be. Now, we've come up with sort of three ideas on how to take a look at it. One is the shared service idea. The second is to have a, to do it the way we're doing it now, with maybe some modifications. So some permanent people plus a call fire supporting. And then we have a third position, which is, is there something in between that would make sense? And we're trying to rough that out. So I think the next steps is, one, to finally settle on the people. We've asked Phil Curran to talk to his people. So I want to make sure that there's one representative there. And then I think we'll form this technical, I want to get some more people, because I know there's people who've come to me and said, you know, I might be interested. So I want to get the names down. And then I think probably next week, we should just create this with a roadmap of how we're going to do this. And then we'll put the committees together and start addressing it.
So you're going to have one committee that's going to do the technical and they're going to prioritize MRI's report. What do you envision the other committee doing?
So they bring it to the other committee, which we now start to deal with. How does this make sense in terms of what we can afford financially? Would the shared service are staying alone? What are the pluses and minuses of that? Part of that will come out of the technical, but there's also issues around just the way we do business. We need to know if we were looking at shared services, how Halifax would approach that.
I thought this was already all discussed last November at your...
No, it was just a, we had a meeting, maybe two, three hours. The fire chief had pulled together, from Halifax, had pulled together three proposals.
Right.
As he said, it was just kind of quickly done, just to give an idea, and it started the conversation. So he's agreed, he's going to go back and look at what he had done and then do it all over, because he says it's totally outdated now. Then we'll kind of bounce that up against what MRI is saying and see where these things fit. In my mind, I don't have the expertise, but if we have the right people on the committee, we can then address, you know, is this something that works? Will the residents buy it? The Halifax residents buy it? Will the Plimpton residents buy it? Are the costs defined enough so that we can stand in front of town meeting and say, this is what it's going to cost and this is the roadmap for the next five years?
This is what it's going to cost and this is what it's going to get.
Yep, exactly. We want to know that the response times are, I hope, better than adequate. I think Cisco and Light Control will have some, they'll really want to know how they're going to be protected. Between them, they have something like 1,000 to 1,200 employees. So it's a big operation.
But if there's still running trucks out at this same station, why would anything change? If anything, I would think it would get better.
Hopefully.
With trained personnel.
But the cost of this may be an issue that we have to then address, you know, because I think if we run it the way it's running right now, the way it was running, that won't work.
Right.
Because we didn't, it hasn't worked. We had some deficiencies and we're going to try to correct those. Those, I think they're going to come with more cost. But on the other hand, maybe there's some efficiencies that we can put in place. Talking to Phil Curran, he's already said that he thinks there's things we can do that'll, you know, help. And then the training issue, we need to do, we have to have training better than we've had. That's been a very weak spot. So he's addressing that. So I think it's going to take a little while, but I'm hoping by the end of June that we'll have something...
My next question is, do we have a timeline?
We have a contract, or will have a contract with the interim chief that's at will. The former chief is being paid through June 30th. It seems to me that's a good kind of put that is, okay, we want this figured out by then, so that July 1st, we can either have or know what the next step is to get the people all squared away. And I think if we do it correctly and we get enough involvement, that the residents will back us.
It's an aggressive timeline.
It is.
Yeah, it's a town meeting, the 3rd week in May.
Well, we won't have a full town meeting. I don't see how we can have it.
So we're listening, but you're looking at a year from July.
Yes, but we'll hold public hearings and have the residents come in. I mean...
Yeah, because a lot of them don't have a clue what the proposal is right now. And people are kind of scared, not knowing what's out there and what the proposals are, as we discuss between your board and the Halifax board that are going to have a meeting.
Yeah, they'll...
What it is, they're like, oh.
You know, that meeting was on cable.
Right, I'm sorry.
Right. So it's, you know, today's meeting was not on cable, it was kind of an ad hoc meeting because we were meeting with the Halifax fire chief, so he could introduce himself to the town administrator and we grabbed him and sat him down and said, hey, we want to chat. I don't think he was prepared, but that's all right.
So you're not prepared to make those committees now? I mean, I kind of feel like...
No, I think there's some more people that are going to come out of the woodwork that I want to get on. So I want to talk to a few people, make sure they're on board. I know, Steve, you have been expressed an interest and we have, we have, let's see, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8 right now that have committed, residents in town. So I want to give one more chance for three or four or whatever.
You think there's going to be a conflict with him being on it?
Why would there be?
Also, Halifax and Halifax as well, I retired out of Kingston on both departments.
No, I think we're going to have, we're looking for technical expertise. I'm not looking for people who come in with a narrow view that it can only be done this way. If that's going to be the attitude, then that person's going to have to leave. We really want to, I don't want to have to revisit this again in three years, five...
You've got the plan, we just need to look at it, what's going to be the best bang for the town.
So I think once people get working together, we've always, already seen some of that now, you know. I think there was a, you saw it on the, you were here when, there was an uproar. It's settled down a little. There's still a lot of questions, you know, people are concerned, they ought to be. But I think we're doing the right thing.
We're going to work on putting together an RFP with Halifax to get someone in here to give us the cost analysis of the three different scenarios.
Yeah.
So that that can go to this, not the technical group, but the other group that's more kind of determining our future path. And so that's something we need to get cracking so that we can get those numbers, because it's hard to really discuss this until you know what the costs are that are associated. I know Halifax has their own group, they've already put together and they're working on this now, but we need to get moving to get some firm numbers, five-year projections as to what's this going to cost us and what is it going to get us, so that this second group is able to...
...to lead the implementation.
Right, exactly, exactly. And we need forward-thinking people, you know, we can't necessarily, there might be things that worked in the past that we do need to continue with, but we need to look towards our future and the future of the department and having them prepared and...
Fortunately, that's what it bonds with the fire service in the Northeast. We're probably dinosaurs compared to the rest of the country. There's things like this that happen throughout the country with no problems. And you get those little fight of them, nobody wants to give up and they got to look out of the big box and say, okay, what's going to work, what's not going to work?
Yeah.
Well, that was really the beauty of this, the whole situation with Halifax, is that Warren was agreeable to it. He thought it was a good idea. Chief Vaveros from Halifax thought it was a good idea. I mean, it just makes sense. We need to work together. We have to, we all have limited funds and trying to get the biggest bang for your buck and a lot of times it's working together. And so I think that we're definitely heading in the right direction.
Do you, do you think we need to vote on the shared training?
We do.
Yeah?
All right, I'll make a motion that we send Halifax a, what we needed to do, you may even already know, that we're going to be working with Halifax to get our people trained, which is fantastic, that Chief Vavero's reached out to us with the grant money to get our people that are not Fire 1 and Fire 1, or Fire 2, and EMT trained, certified, get a, basically, a private training session with Halifax people that need to be certified and our people, to get them up to speed as quickly as possible. I think it may happen as early as next month. So, he had reached out to Sean Cronin from the Department of Revenue, and Sean thought that it was an acceptable use of the grant, but that we should take a vote to amend our application to use the training money now to get our people trained.
The board wasn't, it was based on if the 2 towns did shared services, so this is, we're not shared services?
Well, this is, is kind of a shared service agreement of training, right?
And it's a lead-in.
In the anticipation of...
Right, exactly, of more shared service opportunities. But it's important that our people are trained to a consistent level, if they're going to be responding in both towns. And there are things that Halifax offers that we don't, with the ladder truck and different things.
Everybody gets to have the opportunity to work in both pieces.
Exactly. And we've got Cisco, which is a whole nother opportunity.
Somebody ready to implement, everybody's on the same page.
That everybody's on the same page, and you can respond to either town, and it will be seamless. That really needs to be the goal.
Plus, it's going to be used as that boot camp, to get residents that may have the idea, hmm, I think I'm interested, but you know, it's the opportunity, not...
Now's the opportunity, absolutely. All right. So, I'll go back and I'll make a motion that we send a letter to the Department of Revenue, that we are, would like to amend the grant application.
Yeah, Jason said that it could be done as a vote to endorse the shared training opportunity.
Okay, all right. I'll make a motion to endorse the shared training opportunity for, between Plimpton, Halifax, Fire Departments. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Terrific. All right, anything else on that topic?
I don't think so.
Not for tonight? Okay. All right, so, order on.
I do have one question. So, when you decide who the committees are, how will you notify people? Just like...
We'll, probably through email, but also at the next meeting. We'll just read off the names. Yeah.
Yeah, because in some of these people, it wouldn't make sense for them to be on one committee, you know, like, I would think it would make more sense for Rick Jordan to be on, more of the future committee, rather than prioritizing the...
I think from his perspective, he has probably 2 things. One is, yes, operationally, I want to know that you're ready to deliver the service. But I also want to know, is the town ready to step up, you know, because we have other things going on. And it has to fit in the context of the whole town. So, we're going to have to make, we're going to have to make sure that he feels comfortable, that what we're doing is something that's good for Cisco and Light Control. They're, they're both together, and both are great operations for Plimpton.
Yeah, well, it helps with that offset the tax money. They shouldn't, I don't know how much input they should have. They should have some input, but I don't even know if they have, like, an onsite fire brigade, some of the big companies do that.
I don't think they do.
So, they have nothing.
I don't think they have anything. But, you know, we can talk about that as, as things get squared away. Okay, so probably next week?
Yes.
Get more mobilization. Okay. All right. So, moving on, we're now on to Memorial Day. Bree, that one's yours?
Yes. So, I sent the information to the Denet, to Peter Venido, Mrs. Gerard, and Mrs. Cardinal, for the applicants, for the singers and the essay writers. So, hopefully that'll be coming along.
Terrific.
And hopefully, that we'll be meeting in a week or 2 with the committee. There's a few of us, and I think between myself, Kathy, the Garden Club, I'll get in touch with them. I just spoke to Joe Palestine, and Franny Wash, we'll get it together.
Perfect.
So, we might have a float this year.
Wow, that's exciting. All right, annual town meeting prep. We need to close the warrant for the annual town meeting, but do we want to, why don't we wait to the very end of the meeting to do that, in case something comes in?
Um, well, it's 8:00 p.m. You could take the vote to close it effective at 8:00 p.m., in case we're not still here.
Is somebody going to be here to accept one of our votes?
Well, everything's electronic, or I would check, obviously, like, the building's closed for business now.
Okay.
It closed at 7:00. So, that wouldn't be any more walk-ins.
Okay. All right.
So, we can...
And the emails will be time stamp. And I have the placeholders.
So, I'll make a motion that we will close the annual town meeting warrant at 8:00 p.m., and that the process will include you checking email for anything that comes in before.
Correct. And I'll check the mailbox, too, before I leave.
Perfect.
Since we're closed for business now, so that's fine.
All right. I'll second the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. I don't believe that we already opened the warrant for the special town meeting. Did we, Bree? I don't think when we opened, when we talked about this a long time ago, I don't think we did either.
No.
Okay, so I'll make a motion that we open the warrant for the special town meeting.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. And then, we had done our report, the selectmen's report. Did you get a chance to read it, John?
I did. I thought it was good.
Okay, so you're okay with it?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, Bree, I'll email that to you tonight.
Yes, and I'm still looking, I posted something on Plimpton Helping Plimpton, for the memoriam section, that if anybody has a loved one, they would like to be put in that was a resident, and that was active in the community.
Okay.
It's important. Maybe a picture, and just a little something about them.
Yeah, the way I used to do that was, I'd meet with Tara and go through the, you know, the obituaries.
I did. I have them.
Okay.
And, I don't know, but so I...
Have you served on the committee?
On the, what committee?
On any committee?
Well, I mean, it would be nice if somebody wrote about them and had, a lot of people don't know what they have done in town. It's been so long ago. I mean, I could name a couple of people now, but I don't want to get someone else that's not.
Do you want to, why don't you email us the names, and we'll see if we can put something together?
All right.
Okay.
I know by talking to Barbara, she gave me a few, and you can look them up, but I don't have pictures of the people. It would be nice to...
Well, maybe we can try to find contact, so we can get pictures as well.
So, I did put something on Plimpton Helping Plimpton, which I'm sure it's going to go, because it's good on Facebook, so.
All right. All right, so the town report is done. Okay, do you have a report?
Uh, yes, I have a few things. So, Waging Personnel met on Friday, and they did vote on the 4 warrant articles. There was some discussion about the Board of Assessors looking to have some hours authorized for an individual who's currently doing some title work for them. After conferring with FinCom and getting input from myself, and also Barbara, and Waging Personnel, they've opted to simply place an article on the annual town meeting warrant. It's for $1,500, and Barbara had them word it, and probably smartly so, for consultant hours, so that if they, you know, changed course or whatever, or if the individual who's doing it got tired of doing it, so that they could move on to somebody else, and it would be a little bit more open-ended. And they have been able to add quite a bit of revenue to the tax base as a result of tracking down some of these owner unknown parcels. So, that will more than pay for itself. So, I think that they went about that the right way. I think that that's the best course of action, as opposed to a whole new employee.
Right.
For the Atwood property, we did receive the signed indemnification from the appraiser. So, they are in touch with the Atwoods Realtor and attorney, and they should be selecting a date and time to do that. So, they're all set as far as that's concerned. We're still waiting for the official response to our 61A write-a-first refusal letter. Once that comes in, then we'll need to figure out our next steps as far as that open-ended gravel application that's still sitting in the office. So, that's kind of on hold until we hear their response. Starting to work on the special town meeting warrant, you just opened it tonight, and there's already a few things kind of waiting in the queue for that. I'm also working on the Highway Superintendent advertisement. Old Colony Planning Council sent me some correspondence. They're actually seeking to amend a contract that they have with the state for our benefit, to see if they can get some additional funding on their end through their channels to help us with our annual reporting for the Green Communities program. So, I thought that was very nice.
Good.
They kind of went out of their way for us. Their funding was already solidified, but they went back and kind of reopened that can of worms to see if they can get a little extra for us. So, that's, that would be very helpful.
That would be helpful.
For IT, our IT person, Michael Rodriguez, was here last week. He did settle an issue for Board of Health, so they're happy now with their printer setup and everything. He moved right along with the new computers. We still have one that we're kind of working on some assignment questions, as far as who's going to get that. He also needs to get for us 2 new battery backups for the server. In the last storm that we had, for whatever reason, the generator did not maintain continuous power to the servers, and they went down for a considerable amount of time, like, even beyond when we got our internet service back here, there were still issues with the server itself. So, he thinks that the battery backups will solve that. I think they're about $300 apiece, and we need 2 of them. But the bigger point is that we probably need to consult with an electrician at some point when things settle down here, and find out what, what exactly is the generator powering. I know that, like, largely, it's the building as a whole, but maybe there's some modifications that could be made, because sometimes after it's been on for a while, the power's kind of flickering in different spots. So, maybe we could kind of pick and choose, especially if now, if we're not going to be looking to use this building as a shelter. I know that Fire Department made arrangements with MIMA to utilize the church. So, from now on, in a disaster, that church should be set up like an official approved MIMA shelter, complete with, like, food and staffing and everything. So, if that's the case, we might be able to pick and choose some things here with the help of an electrician, and kind of consolidate that, and make sure that our server stays up.
Mm-hmm.
He's also looking at doing something different for us with Wi-Fi, but that'll, he has an electrician that he could consult with, which he offered to do to get us a free estimate of what it might cost to do the Wi-Fi. There's a cable that needs to be run, and it would be placed in a midpoint in the building, so that everybody can get a signal from it. Otherwise, we have the Lieutenant Governor coming tomorrow at 2:30. She only has a few minutes available for the tour. She does have a fairly tight schedule, from what I've been told. But she's very happy to come here and see how Jim Mulcahy utilized some grant funding from a few years ago. So, I think that that's very nice, that we're being recognized. And I was able to coordinate with Rick Jordan from Cisco, and he said, you know, why don't we all kind of come inside to the main entrance at least, so that she can get her foot in the door in the building. So, he's aware that she's on a tight schedule. It may only be 5 minutes or so, but we thought that was nice to introduce her to them.
Oh, so nice.
Where it all has to do with the economic development piece to it, and keeping those roadways in good condition and everything. So, so that seems like a nice culmination to the little road tour that we're doing.
And she's a former selectman, so she hopefully empathizes with what we do every day.
Yeah, so, so that's good. We're looking forward to that. And then, for correspondence, we have a commendation letter issued by Chief Patrick Dillon to Sergeant Brian Cranshaw. This is relative to a case that he solved, coming from a search warrant and an arrest that he was able to make with some theft that was going on in town. All in total, 46 stolen items were recovered and went back to their rightful owners. So, that was certainly impressive. And then, I received a letter from, the acronym is CHAPA, Citizens Housing and Planning Association. They're one of the 40B monitors, and apparently, somebody is selling a home at Cranberry Knoll. So, part of their required notification, they do tell us that we could purchase the property for the maximum resale price if we wanted to. I just had to tell you about it, because it's a notification. But they're going to actually work with the seller's Realtor to make sure that all the proper paperwork is done, and when it gets resold and the new purchaser takes ownership, it'll still remain on our subsidized housing inventory. So, we're not losing a unit or anything like that. They, they oversee all that, and they'll make sure that a new deed restriction is recorded.
Perfect. What's the price?
Um, it is $191...
Is that a 2-bedroom?
It does not tell you. It's $191, 191,800.
So, that's the asking price?
That's, yes, that's what they have to do with that. They need to do a separate evaluation, because it's subsidized housing.
I think they're all 2-bedrooms over there, except for 1 or 2 of the 3.
Okay.
So, they have to first, for 90 days, it would have to go to an eligible purchaser who meets the criteria to purchase subsidized housing. And then, if for some reason, they can't sell it within that timeframe, then they're allowed to go to an ineligible purchaser and modify the terms of the deed.
How does that work? So, then, it's not restricted then?
No, not to the same extent. It would still be, there would still be some restriction, but it's a lot, it's a lot different.
So, would that take it out of our inventory then?
It shouldn't. I don't think it will. They're kind of silent on that. Sometimes, it depends on how, what the terms are of the new deeds. But I can imagine that they'd be a problem, because they picked the perfect season to do it. It's something like, it's March 20th through June 20th, I believe. So, that's right at the height of the selling season. So, I think that they'll be...
Good, I hope that they...
Probably will get somebody who qualifies.
That would be perfect.
And then, we had Plimpton Halifax express more tales of old Plimpton, in kind of a recap of all the Fire Department stories.
Terrific.
Back to the Lieutenant Governor, are you going to get to see her?
Oh, yeah, I'm going to go, yes.
Oh, good, okay.
Yes, I'm going to go, and Pat Dillon's going to go, and Jim Mulcahy.
Make sure of all your guys.
Jim is kind of the, the expert on the project, because he was the one who implemented all the funding, like, directly, like, he was the boots on the ground, making sure it got done. So, he has a little, you know, snippet prepared to, to talk about and everything. And we thought it might be nice, too, to mention to her about the money that goes into our capital account from the industrial park. And then, Pat could kind of tie that in and say that we're able to build a new police station.
Might be the sanest thing we've done in the last 5 years, that capital statement.
Yeah, it's fantastic. I was impressed by that, even when I had researched the town before coming here.
All right. All right, so we've got Liz's updates, we did correspondence, Fates to Remember, we're meeting on 4/2, 4/9. We're not meeting on the 16th, because that is a holiday, right? And then, the 23rd and 30th, so we'll have, geez, 4 meetings.
When is the 16th?
The 16th is Patriots' Day.
Wow, cool.
All right. So, Board's calls for coming in. We've got nothing new on economic development. Except that we're meeting with the Lieutenant Governor tomorrow, which is pretty exciting. Financial management, I don't think we've got anything new to report there. Public safety, I would just ask that we begin the process for the RFP to get a consultant in, and I'm not sure exactly how we go about doing that. We already have the grant money to pay for it.
I can research that. And I'll also talk with Charlie, for us to find out, you know, what they're going on there.
If we can coordinate and work together, that's perfect. All right, because it'd be nice to get cracking with that. I can't imagine, it would be that thing of a deal to put the RFP together and get advertised.
No, I don't think so. But we just want to make sure that we follow all the steps.
Absolutely. Okay. Grants, anything new? I don't think we've got any new grants to report on. We've got lots of new volunteers.
We do.
For this, these 2 committees, for, to look at the Fire Advisory, so terrific.
Honestly, for the Fire Advisory, will we do the appointments for that? Do you, are you ready for that? Will that be, like, until dissolved, sort of?
It's only going to be 1 selectmen, so...
No, but everybody else you're going to, we're going to put on it, needs to be pointed.
Okay.
And you said 2 groups. Do you want to, like, name it Group 1 and Group 2, like, how do you...
Well, 1 is going to be more looking at the, yeah, it'll have 2 different charges. It'll have 2 different charges for each of the groups, so we can figure that out.
That won't be coming up in any of those, because I'll get them... There's a lot of names.
Yeah, I think John will have that ready for next week. All right. Technology out. Do we have anything new on the technological front? All right. I don't think we've got any minutes, do we?
You should have. And then I printed these out, because that's what I was doing when I was in there, and then I realized we were going to start.
Yeah, I don't... I don't think I have any minutes. Why don't we hold these, and let's get caught up at our next meeting, get all the minutes done? Can you make copies of those for us?
Yes. Do you want this one?
Yeah.
Okay.
So that we can get current after...
I have a question on the Dates to Remember. The April 2nd, are we going to do an executive session?
I think we are going to do an executive session.
Yes.
Yeah, I'm sure too.
Purpose 2?
Uh, yes. 2.
2?
Yep. 2. All right. And then, I think that's about it. Do you have anything else?
Nope.
Do you want to start with a rant and rave? Or we'll...
I would say a rave for all the people who are volunteering to come out on the fire committee. Nice outpouring of people. That's great.
All right. My rave is going to be for Jason Averos from Halifax for reaching out to us to help get our firefighters and EMTs trained. He's been so wonderful throughout this process with talking about shared services and coming up with ideas. He's been really a pleasure to work with, and, you know, he said, you know, "We're neighbors. You guys are all brothers and firefighters," and that he wanted to make sure that our people were trained and prepared. So it was great that he reached out to us to do it, because I don't know if it would have happened otherwise. So thank you very much, Jason.
So I'm not sure whether it's a rant or rave, but it revolves around earth removal bylaw, and people are trying real hard, and I think it's both the joys and the sorrow of government is trying to find that middle ground that balances and protects at the same time, and keep plugging away on it, and sooner or later, it will be a rave.
Working progress.
Working progress.
Okay. All right. So we will be back 6 o'clock next week. We'll be here at 5:30 in executive session, and then we'll start regular session at 6:00. So see everyone next week. Have a great week.
Good night.